Aloha, kakahiaka kakou. And welcome everyone to the Office of Oha Affairs for the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Today is Thursday, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time now is ten oh seven A M. Board Secretary, please take a roll call.
Trustee Ahuna.
Yo.
Trustee Akaka.
Yo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha mai kakou.
Trustee Alapa.
First.
Trustee Galuteria. Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza. Or is.
He's on his way.
Trustee Waheee.
Present.
Chair Kaheli.
Present.
You have seven trustees present. You have quorum.
Okay, this meeting can be viewed via live stream on Oha's website at W W W dot Oha dot org forward slash livestream. For those joining us on Zoom to testify or listen, please note that we're using the webinar platform rather than the standard Zoom meeting format. As an attendee, you'll be able to watch and listen to the proceedings, and if you wish to testify on a specific agenda item, please follow these steps. Please raise your hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. We will change your status from attendee to panelist when it is your turn. This may take a few seconds, so we appreciate your patience. As a panelist, you will be given five minutes to speak. You have the option to turn your camera and unmute yourself to provide testimony. When recognized to testify, you are to speak to the agenda item that is currently being considered. If you begin to address another topic, the chair will issue a warning. Should you continue to speak on matters outside of the agenda item, your speaking time for that agenda item will end. Once you have finished testifying, please mute yourself and you will be returned to attendee status. In addition to this, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. And this meeting is being conducted in compliance with H R S Chapter ninety-two, Oha Bylaws and Roberts Rules of Order for Small Boards, as modified by applicable statutes and rules. A few reminders as we begin, trustees must be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members may raise a hand instead of standing when seeking to obtain the floor and may remain seated while making motions or speaking. Motions need not be seconded. Public testimony will be called on each agenda item and limited to five minutes per speaker. And the chair may fully participate in discussion and vote. And going forward, trustees can expect to receive the proposed minutes in a timely manner and in compliance with H R S ninety-two dash nine B and O I P guidelines. These guidelines do not require a verbatim record, rather they are to provide one, information as to the meeting, two, the trustees present, three, the motions and votes taken, and four, timestamps for agenda item discussions, motions, and votes. In the event that a trustee requests more detailed minutes than what is legally required, it is incumbent upon that trustee to assign their staff to to prepare a draft within two weeks of the meeting. The completed draft should be submitted to the Board Secretary for inclusion pending the board's review and approval. I'd like to now recognize our kapohana Stacy Ferrera. Stacy, we'd like to introduce any of your administrative staff that are with us today.
Mahalo, Chair. Aloha kakahiaka kakou. Um, joining us today in person, we have our Chief Operating Officer, Kishan Kekina, Investment Director and Interim CFO Ryan Lee, Invest, excuse me, Financial Analyst Grace Chen Kalomai. Her new title is Budget Chief. Um, Grace Chen, General Counsel Everett Ota, Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation, Elena Farden, Director of Human Resources Cory Nakamura, Director of Community Engagement Lisa Von Sekona, Director of Communications Bill Brennan, I T Systems Engineer and Administrators Daniel Santos, and Arlene Aginoto. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo. And also here with the Board of Trustees, we have, of course, our Board Secretary. We have a Deputy Chief of Staff. We have our Board Counsel Kapono Ko'kona and other trustee aides, secretaries and staff that are here to support our trustees today. Our first item is on the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-five? Lehu, do you have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, trustees, any discussion on the May twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-five minutes? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Waheee.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
We have eight yes votes.
Okay, trustees, before we go on to the second um item on our our agenda, which is an informational briefing, um, I'd like with unanimous consent to take community concerns uh and celebrations out of order, at least the community concerns piece, because we have one person that has signed up. And um if we can give that individual an opportunity to speak, then they don't need to wait here for marathon board meetings that uh we we have historically been having. So we have unanimous consent. Okay, at this time, then the chair would like to um um go to community concerns and Lehu, do you have anyone signed up to speak on community concerns at this time?
Yes, we have Raymond here.
Okay, Raymond. Welcome back. Trustees, we have Raymond Sin, uh who, as you recall, um addressed the board at our last meeting. Raymond is a um uh military and civilian and also member of the United States Air Force, so. Welcome, Raymond. You have five minutes for your community concern.
Good morning, Board of Trustees. Uh, thank you again for changing up the schedule. Uh, I do want to introduce myself again. My name is Raymond Sin, United States Air Force, formerly a high school teacher on the ninth island, uh Las Vegas, Nevada. And I want to say that my expertise really is in four particular topics. Military, education, history, science, and technology. Uh, and I want to say also that Robert's Rules of Order is actually from the United States Military Officer Henry Martin Robert eighteen sixty-seven. So the standards we have in the protocol is actually all from the military. I do also want to point out that two days ago was an extremely important day in history, uh September second nineteen sixty-four, one of my favorite Canadian actors. Uh, his birthday, his sixty-first birthday, uh Mister Keanu Reeves, or actually in Hawaiian, it should be Ke'ani, right, for the cool mountain breeze. And I wanted to mention of of native Hawaiian or Chinese and European ancestry. And I wanted to sort of have two things here in in one of his interviews. He said that you can be either a fighter or lover. But his response was sometimes you have to be both, but also fight for what you love. Otherwise, what kind of love is that? So what I mentioned also, September second is also, if you know about World War Two, it is actually the Victory Over Japan Day, September second nineteen forty-five. Um, there's an actual veteran Captain Francis Y of Punahoe School. Uh, they had a celebration of his life at age twenty-seven of native Hawaiian and Chinese ancestry. He was actually killed in action, uh protecting his brothers, I think, believe Robert and Richard Y from having to go into that theater. And he was killed in the Philippines in liberation of the Philippine Islands from the Imperial Japanese. I wanted to share that. Uh, next furthermore, I wanted to really point out the University of Hawaii. Gablee has donated a million dollars to the athletic department there. Uh, so really dedicated to to University of Hawaii. And I wanted to mention on the education front and science and technology, uh, there are some great opportunities as United States citizens. Uh, federal grants matched by the state with H T D C Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. I think nowadays it's important to have a science and technology background for most of the jobs today. Uh, I did see coming here, what is it, like the Ross Store and PetSmart? There's a lot of homeless. I'm from Los Angeles. I've seen Skid Row, been to Kensington, Philadelphia, uh, south side of Chicago, other places all around, tenor one in San Francisco. I do want to mention as well, another important native Hawaiian uh professional surfer and PhD scientist, I believe he lives in San Diego, Mister Clifford Kapono, who I believe actually studied uh either here or in San Diego in oceanography. And in fact, University of Hawaii, the actual research corporation region is oceanography doctorate uh professor there. Uh, so a lot of opportunities there for native Hawaiians and the general residents here for science and technology. Uh, I did want to mention this book before I sign off. I'm reading this book from Native Books in Chinatown, and I want to point out it's called Ho'ulu. Am I saying it correctly? Olu. And so the three main ideas are aloha and pono are two sides of the same coin. Righteousness, balance, and harmony, and compassion. When we heal ourselves, we also heal the world. And to seek and share knowledge, know your roots in the history, the kapuna, the wisdom of your ancestors, and the mana, or mana, I should say, of the land. Uh, I also wanted to mention as well that next week is Honolulu Technology Week. A lot of great people are there as well uh for for knowledge sharing, a lot of university professors and investors, engineers, attorneys. So a great opportunity to uh really showcase the the innovation here in the state of Hawaii. Uh, with regards to my final point, I am wearing this shirt four forty-second. I'm meeting with Miss Claire Matani. She's the secretary of the four forty-second uh Legacy Center here in Hawaii. So although so the sensitivity of the native Hawaiians are here, we have to really at least give our mahalo and thanks to some of the leaders of the state of Hawaii, Sister Hiram Fong, the first state senator, uh military attorney and lawyer, and those Orrin Long, the second uh state senator for the state of Hawaii, uh when it became a state in nineteen fifty-nine, um as well as Senator Daniel Inouye, who was actually uh one of the ones that was instrumental for the highways, the infrastructure, all of the development of the state. So I'm asking for your support. I'm going to meet with Miss Claire Matani later today. Uh, she's much older now and most of the veterans have already passed away. Uh, so any questions regarding military, education, history, science, and technology? I'm gonna go here to help. Uh, once an educator or a teacher, always an educator. So mahalo, thank you for your time and hope to see you next time.
Mahalo, Raymond. Thank you very much. Okay, trustees, we're going back to our scheduled agenda and we're going to take out of order um we're gonna jump right to the status of Oha activities because our presenter for informational briefing, Dr. John Azorio, um is not here yet and is expected to arrive around eleven. So at this time, um we're gonna move on to the status of Oha activities. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, then the chair recognizes our kapohana. Uh, this will be an absent update on Oha activities as relates to the upcoming uh Native Hawaiian convention um by the uh Hawaiian Council in Seattle. Kapohana.
Mahalo, Chair. Um, before I I get into this briefing, I I just wanted to um mahalo Chair, Vice Chair um for really taking lead on coordinating Oha's uh sponsorship partnership with the Hawaiian Council and making sure that um we are coordinated and going to have a really comprehensive um engagement um in in October. So leaving on October sixth and returning on the ninth, a twenty-two Oha delegation comprised of trustees, executives, and staff members are going to be traveling to Tulalip, Washington for the two thousand and twenty-five Native Hawaiian Convention, which will be held at the Tulalip Tribe's federally recognized tribal lands. So Oha is a major sponsor of the convention this year, and the Oha delegation will be fully immersed in various roles over the three days as presenters, conveners, collaborators, and service provider. And we intend to maximize our time and our impact at the convention in four key areas. The first is strengthening our community connections, knowing that we have many of, in fact, a majority of our native Hawaiians are now on the continent, um ensuring that we have uh deep engagements with them. One of those opportunities will be our H R P activation at the convention. We're going to be offering onsite registration, H R P card services, and information on card benefits to strengthen Oha's relationship with our, not just our Kanaka here at home, but our native Hawaiians are also living on the continent. We're going to increase our H R P enrollment. That's the goal. And we're going to be providing real-time assistance and visibility on this program. We're also going to be doing a survey deployment um and insight gathering, and that's going to look like collaborating with native Hawaiian, the native Hawaiian Council on a custom con- uh convention survey in which Oha will be able to include questions that we would like to collect data and perspectives from beneficiaries to help inform our work. Um, we're expecting over two thousand um attendees, so um that's going to be a huge um pool to be able to get data from, so we're excited about that opportunity. And then we're also going to be promoting our two thousand and twenty-six legislative priorities survey and leveraging the convention to encourage attendees to participate in our survey to inform and shape our two thousand and twenty-six advocacy strategies. The next thing that we're going to be focusing on, um another key area is in leadership and advancing native Hawaiian well-being and cultural ike. And so one of those opportunities will be a keynote leadership um speech from our Chair Kaheli. Um, he'll be providing a plenary address and he can share um with the board what his focus will be on that. We're also going to be um providing a panel discussion on what we're calling from seated to seated. And so there is a little bit of a play on the word seated, um C E D E D to seated, and really fulfilling the constitutional promise of the Public Land Trust for Native Hawaiians. And this panel discussion will be filled with uh prominent Hawaiian leaders who will discuss and inform attendees on the historical context of the Hawaiian Kingdom Crown and government lands, the constitutional and hauri revised statute mandates pertaining to the Public Land Trust and the twenty percent owed to native Hawaiians, as well as highlighting Oha's leadership within the Public Land Trust Working Group and outlining a unified path forward for securing the rightful financial returns for native Hawaiian beneficiaries. We're also going to be having a session that will focus on mana'i mauli'ola implementation, being able to share Oha's strategic vision from strength to well-being, emphasizing tangible progress in education, health, housing, and economic resilience. We'll also be able to demonstrate Oha's leadership in designing and implementing impactful programs and services for Hawaiian families and communities. We will also be offering um empowering cultural ike um opportunities through workshops. One will be unlocking mo'ukau'auha, genealogical identity, and inohavai, traditional naming practices, um equipping our attendees with knowledge that strengthens personal, cultural, and collective identity. And we're really excited um to be able to be the convener of Aho Opio during the convention, inspiring our next generation of leaders and mahalo to Anu Awochun, who has been um diligently putting this program together. And so Oha is going to lead a seventy-five-minute Aho Opio youth session designed to inspire and equip our our Opio ages thirteen through twenty-five with skills, knowledge, and confidence to advocate for their communities. Our Opio will explore the history of aloha'aina and engage in interactive advocacy skill building, which will include testimony drafting, strategic planning, and creative expression. And through panel discussions and breakout stations that we are going to be um having our trustees and our executives and those who are traveling with um with Oha be able to serve as mentors during these breakout um stations to talk about our Mimo strategic directions and how we can advocate in the various areas of education, housing, economic resilience, and aina. So youth will be able to develop actionable plans during this seventy-five-minute period, and hopefully we'll be able to get some tangible um solutions to addressing issues that impact their ohana and our lahui. And one of our other focus areas while we're at the convention will be the advancement of aina aloha economic development models and the exploration of potential opportunities to collaborate with others. And that will look like um and a hualka'i that we're going to take um with the Pacific Rim Tone Woods and Utopia Tree Farm site visit. And this will be on October sixth. And so Oha will be traveling on this hualka'i with partners that include the Siglo Tone Woods. So they are um a manufacturer of uh instruments, wooded instruments. Um, and we'll be going along with K S D H H L and Ho'okele Strategies. And we'll be learning about um how they're currently doing regenerative forestry, commercial forestry, conservation strategies, and circular economy models, and identifying potential partnership opportunities that align with all um Oha and our O E V well-being and aina'ma'mona um tactics, as well as our economic resilience strategies, and looking for opportunities on our own aina um with these potential partners back home. And then lastly, we're going to be focusing on enhancing our organizational visibility and um engagement with conferency, um conference attendees. Um, that will look like strategic media engagement. So mahalo to Bill, who will be there onsite with us. And we're gonna activate um not just through um, you know, all the ways that I've just mentioned in terms of our workshops, our panel discussions, our chair doing his uh plenary speech, but also we're going to be doing um social media blast. We'll be doing live media streams, um providing press releases all real time um at the conference. And then also, we have an opportunity to do branded marketing through our use of our logo and um other opportunities through our sponsorship. We're also going to have an opportunity to um do a great deal of networking and partnership building. And so we're hoping to forge deeper alliances with C N H A, Kamehameha Schools, D H H L, and many other native Hawaiian-serving um organizations that will be in attendance. Um, this will give us an opportunity to look for um ways that we can align our priorities around housing, education, aina, and economic resilience. And then also expanding our engagement and networks on the continent. So connecting with native Hawaiian community leaders and organizations from across the continental U S and also building indigenous and tribal partnerships um as we go on this hualka'i and as we look forward to meeting others um at the conference that are going to be coming from and representing their tribes. So that's my update. So there's there's a lot that's going to happen. And it takes a lot of coordination, so we are meeting on a weekly basis to ensure that we stay in lockstep and and we continue to further develop our agenda. Um, I'm gonna offer some time to Chair if you wanted to add anything.
Yeah, no, thanks Kapono for that, the great update. So trustees, um, you know, we have been meeting um at least twice as a Oha group in addition to um small meetings that we've had with um Kuhiu Lewis and the Hawaiian Council team over the last maybe month and a half or so, um especially after um our June thirtieth budget meeting where we approved our legacy sponsorships. And in that budget, we approved thirty-five thousand dollars from Oha to support the Hawaiian Council Convention in Seattle. Um, I I think, can't speak for previous times, but I think at least in recent memory, it is is it is one of the largest amounts that Oha has supported the Hawaiian Council's convention and one that is um being held on the continent. So they are very, very excited. They're ecstatic, to say the least, in this um so financial support and relationship that that um Oha has with the Hawaiian Council. And they have uh included a whole bunch of different things for for Oha to be a part of, to be front and center on uh at this convention, which like Kapohana said, you know, is expected to attract over two thousand people from both Hawaii and the continent. So we have been having uh meetings. The Vice Chair has been participating in that as well, but um because of sunshine law, we we have been unable to include all of you, and many of you are going to the convention as well. So this is an opportunity for the Kapohana to give us uh and give you an update and if you ask questions, um, your ideas, your um feedback is are welcome. And um uh, we just wanted to make sure since we are about a month out from the convention, I believe, um that uh we had a chance to make sure that we were capturing um especially for the trustees that are going to attend, the things that you think are important and and relevant for Oha. So I will yield to Trustee Alapa.
Um, thank you so much, uh Stacy, for that. Um, it is, sounds like a very packed schedule we have. Um, so on that note, um, uniform-wise, is there any of that we need to consider? Or is that already provided? What's the situation on that?
Mahalo. Um, so part of our logistics coordination, we will make sure that prior to the trip, that all travelers will have that level of detail in terms of transportation, attire, and assignments, because again, we do have engagements in various ways throughout the the three days that we want to make sure that everybody can, everybody knows where they're going to be assigned, how they're going to be assisting, what role you'll be, you know, providing um over the three days. So we will make sure to get that to all travelers prior to us leaving.
Schedule, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Akaka? Any, any feedback? Are you sure? Trustee Galuteria? Anyone else have a you know, our our goal, like um Kapono was saying, we're gonna have uh our Hawaiian registry um mobile machines, which I believe have arrived. Lisa? They're in the back? Yep, thumbs up. I think we have six of them. That will be starting to be deployed to our uh neighbor island Oha locations. Um, we'll be incorporating to our 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 remote um of, you know, uh satellite locations we're doing on the big island, but bringing them to convention. And they will be set up there. And we're gonna do um, we have about a month working with Hawaiian Council uh to help get the word out to participants that are coming, uh the necessary documentation that that they will need to to bring with them so that they can um get their Hawaiian registry card there. And uh I I probably will foot stomp it here. We should all have our Hawaiian registry cards. If you do not have one, you have a month. Please work with our BSAs and let's get those registry cards. And so every one of us at Oha has one, and we'll think of innovative ways up there to um uh encourage people to to have them as well. So that's that's on its way. And that'll allow us to do data collection and to also help add to our um our our continuing growing registry. But anything else? Anyone else before moving on? Okay, wonderful. Okay, thank you for that update. It is still not eleven o'clock, so we're gonna run on to new business. Um next item on our agenda is the Committee on Budget and Finance. We have three action items that we'll ratify. And before I call on the Chair of the Committee, Trustee Alapa, uh Lehu, do you have anyone signed up to testify on any of these budget and finance action items?
No one has signed up to testify on these items.
Okay, then we'll let's take up new business, Committee on Budget and Finance, and the Chair recognizes the Chair of Budget and Finance, Trustee Alapa.
Mahalo, Chair Kaheli. Um, where are we going to be reading? Oh, it's right there. Okay, so um let me have the Committee on Budget and Finance for Action Item B F number twenty-five dash sixty-nine. Approval of revisions to certain staff positions and salary adjustments for field staff positions approved in the Oha Biennium Budget for Fiscal Biennium Periods two thousand and twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty-six for the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven, and signing bonus budget approval for the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-six. This was for August twenty, two thousand and twenty-five.
This page is for this action item.
Yeah, but Chair, you want to go to the next page?
Okay. Yeah, here it is. Yeah. Okay, uh, there it is. You see it? Okay, so approve um motions and revisions to the following position titles for those from those approved in the action item of the bot two thousand and twenty-five dash fifty-one, attachment two uh on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And that motion one is number one, change G I S analyst to geographic information system administrator. Number two, change Papa Kilo and Kipuka Systems Administrator to Digital Archive System Administrator. Number three, change N H Data Book Systems Administrator to Native Hawaiian Data System Administrator. And number four, change commercial property agent to investment land asset manager.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Waheee.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, Chair Alapa, to read uh into the record, motion number two as part of the the A I.
Motion number two, approve salary budget adjustments and corresponding fringe and F Y twenty-seven merit-based salary adjustment amounts effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five for F Y twenty-six and F Y two thousand and twenty-seven for identified positions below from those approved in action item B O T twenty-five dash fifty-one, attachment four on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Number one, change the salary for beneficiary services agent sixty-six eight seven, six hundred, sixty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-six to sixty-two thousand nine hundred four. Number two, change the salary for director of technology services from one thirteen, one hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty-six to one hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-six. And number three, change the salary for Grants Officer Three from seventy-eight thousand three hundred twelve to sixty-nine thousand six hundred dollars.
Trustees, any discussion on that motion?
Oh, God, thank you.
Okay, if not, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ahuna.
Yes.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee. Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Kahili?
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, Chair Alapa, motion number three.
Approve one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for signing bonuses in the amount of five thousand dollars each for thirty-one vacancies for fiscal year twenty-two-six as set forth in attachment A. Subject to final approval by the OHA Administrator.
Trustees, discussion? Here in on, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna?
Yes.
Trustee Akaka? Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria? Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Kahili?
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, we'll move it on to the second action item. This is BF twenty-five seventy regarding the approval of OHA staff temporary assignment salary differentials. So Chair recognizes, uh, Chair BNF to read the motion number one. And it's, and it is quite lengthy, but we're gonna read it into the record. No, no, it's yours. Yep.
Follow my, follow my au. Okay, motion, I know, right? Motion B, motion to approve action item BF twenty-five dash seventy. Approval of OHA staff FY twenty-six, twenty-seven temporary assignment salary differentials, excluding executive team leadership, temporary assignments amendment. Number one, certification of need. A temporary assignment certification is determined by supervisor, TA. It may be made when the PAI, PIA Director or Manager Position is vacant. Or if the vacancy is at the director manager level, the next level up on the executive leadership team certifies that the need for the services is immediate. The assignment is essential to operations and the assignment is in the best interests of OHA and its beneficiaries. The salary differential become effective the first day of the temporary assignment. A temporary assignment shall not exceed ninety calendar days per calendar year, except with the option to extend an additional ninety days extension based on operational needs by the administrator. Under no circumstances shall the temporary assignment exceed one hundred eighty days. Eligibility and priority. Priority for temporary assignment shall be given to OHA staff within the PIA, where the vacancy exists. Only OHA employees who are on one tier below the vacant position may be considered for a temporary assignment. Employees two or more layer tiers below the vacant position are not eligible for temporary assignment to that role. Number three, TA salary increase cap. The temporarily assigned employee shall receive a ten percent salary increase for those assuming duties and responsibilities of a vacant position in a higher wage band position one level higher for the duration of the temporary assignment. And that temporarily as, assigned employee shall receive a five percent salary increase for those assuming duties and responsibilities of a vacant position in the same wage band for the duration of the temporary assignment.
Keep going. Is that it?
Scroll up.
Assignment to that role. Yep.
Oh, that was, uh,
There's number three, the TA salary increase cap. Okay, right there, right there. Yeah, number three.
The TA salary increase cap?
Yeah, you can read that as well.
The temporarily assigned employee shall receive a ten percent salary increase for those assuming duties and responsibilities of a vacant position in a higher wage band position one level higher for the duration of the temporary assignment. The temporarily assigned employee shall receive a five percent salary increase for those assuming duties and responsibilities of a vacant position in the same wage band for the duration of the temporary assignment.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Trustees, any discussion on the new, um, TA salary differential policy? Okay, here in on, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Kahili?
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, we're gonna go on to the third item, uh, which is action on BF twenty-five seventy-one. This is approval to activate external hiring services budget from fiscal year twenty-two-six biennium budget to fill key OHA staff positions. Uh, just trustees, as, as a reminder, um, this item we, um, heard in committee yesterday. Normally, I like to have things at least two weeks later because to give trustees a chance to ask questions of staff and, and do some of their further due diligence. But because of the urgency of this request, the, the administration requested that it would be placed on the very next day's agenda item for approval. So that, uh, Kapuana and, and Human Resources can execute this and, um, start recruiting as, as quickly as possible. Some of these key positions that they've had a difficult time recruiting for in the last few months. So. Chair recognizes, Vice, uh, the Chair of BNF to read the action item.
Mahalo. Approve the, um, motion number one for this item twenty-five dash seventy-one, approve the use of budget line number two-hundred forty-nine for contract for hiring services within Human Resources Budget for fiscal year twenty-two-six in the amount of one hundred forty thousand dollars prior to December thirty-first, twenty-two-five to supplement ongoing recruiting efforts for the following key OHA staff positions. Number one, Chief Financial Officer. Number two, Managing Director of Real Estate Resource Management Land Assets. And number three, other key positions identified by the administrator based on operational necessity.
Trustees, any discussion? Okay, here in on, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna?
Yes.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Kahili?
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, thank you, Chair Alapa, for those items.
First.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our second reading. This is gonna be now on the Board of Trustee, um, agenda. We have action item number twenty-five-ten. Uh, this is second reading on, uh, the changes to OHA's Executive Policy Manual. Lehu, do you have anyone signed up to testify on this agenda item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, trustee, so for the Executive Policy Manual, I'm assuming, do I just have the handouts or does everyone else have these handouts as well that were put here? What's that? Okay, uh, so we incorporated, uh, the changes that were discussed at the last meeting. If any of our trustees want to bring those up, I know trustee Akaka had an amendment, um, that, uh, added language and, and clarified further the annual ceded land or public land trust revenues in, in two different locations. Uh, trustee Souza had, um, some amended language as it relates to Series Two Thousand and the Beneficiary Support Services regarding housing development projects. We added some information for our, our executive session, uh, and how that would, um, how that would proceed forward for, um, trustees that want to access and review previous executive session minutes. And then we also made some minor changes to the delegation of authority, more, more cleanup stuff. I don't think anything substantial has changed there. In any case, trustee Akina?
Chair, I'll also have a proposal regarding budget administration, um,
Sure.
preparation.
Sure.
A minor one.
Okay, um, trustees, anyone else? If not trustee Akina? You can note the page?
Yes, very good. Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at page forty-three now in the Series Three Thousand Administration. Subtitled Budget Administration Preparation, page forty-three and section three point four, point F.
Okay, hold on. Just one second to, uh, get on the same page as you are.
Once again, page forty-three. Section three point four, point F.
Forty-three, I'm almost with you. Forty-three, section three point four, point F. Okay, go ahead.
Yes. I'll begin reading for context at the start of the paragraph. It is the policy of OHA to develop a biennium budget in accordance with the OHA Native Hawaiian Trust Fund Spending Policy and State of Hawaii Laws, Rules and Regulations. The budget shall include all sources of funding and all categories of expenditures for the biennium. Now, this is the part that I want to draw your attention to. The administrator, Board of Trustees, or an appropriate designee shall prepare the OHA biennium budget for BOT consideration and approval. It's that sentence where I, I first want to raise a question about who is indicated here as preparer for the OHA biennium budget. We have listed the administrator, which has been our practice, Board of Trustees, which certainly has the authority. But we mentioned here, appropriate designee shall prepare the OHA biennium budget. I'd appreciate any insight into who that refers to, that, that third party, an appropriate designee, not in the administration and not on the board.
You know, I'm gonna recognize Chair BNF since purview of your committee, if you have any initial thoughts.
Well, as stated previously, uh, with the administrator, uh, implementing our policies and our budget. And then, of course, the majority vote of our, our Board of Trustees, I believe, uh, we're in good standing with that. I wouldn't know who an appropriate designee would be at this point. So I, I would agree with the trustee Akina to keep it as such, um, as stated.
Thank you. Uh, that, that would be my recommendation, just not to make mention of an appropriate designee.
Okay.
Uh, we, and, um, I do have language for that, which I've just passed out. It, it would,
Yeah, but, uh, you, you're, you're striking the Board of Trustees.
Yes, that, that's the second thing to which I want to bring your attention. Um,
Hold on, but you're not striking the appropriate designee?
That's what I thought we were doing.
Which you proposed in front of the Board, trustee Akina, in your amendment, does not strike the appropriate designee?
That is correct. Uh, I may have made a mistake here. Let me take a careful look at this.
But, but while you're looking at that, I guess, um, Kapuana, if, I, I mean, the way I would read it would be an appropriate designee would be the Budget Chief, the Chief Financial Officer. I mean, it's not someone who is not an OHA employee. It would be my guess. It's either you, this board, or someone else, right? And that someone else would be the Budget Chief. But anyway, I'd hear initially your thoughts. Kapuana, you recognize?
Um, well, to your point, I think, um, when we talk about the administrator, that would encompass all administration, which the Budget Chief would be a, a part of that.
Well, then we would change it to the administration.
Yeah, that's, that would be appropriate.
We, you could say the administration, Board of Trustees, the administration
Or.
or Board of Trustees shall prepare the OHA biennium budget. No, no, no. Yeah, so, I mean, it could read that. The administration, Board of Trustees, administration. Okay, wait, we'll pause on that. What, what is this second, um, suggestion? Approved by a majority vote of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Akina, what is your thoughts on that amendment?
I, this speaks to my having taken out Board of Trustees earlier. The board role is to approve the budget. So, and it retains authority over the budget and the process. And I felt that simply stating that the board approved, that the, reiterating that it should be approved by a majority of the Board of Trustees protects the role of the board. So we don't need to mention them earlier. That's why I put the administrator.
Why do your thoughts of that are, we, we capture that in the appendix to Operation Delegation of Authority that explicitly names the Board of Trustees as the final, for the final approval for the fiscal year biennium budget. So I don't know if it's necessary to have that in there because it's already explicit in the budget approvals matrix.
Really looks good originally. I mean, just, just right there. Now, this is the first time that I'm hearing that appropriate designee is referring specifically to a member of the administration. That, if that's the case, I would simply leave it the way it is and withdraw my recommendation.
Yeah, or neither, neither, neither could I. Yeah, I mean, I think if we were to make a, a change for clarity's sake, it would read the administration and the Board of Trustees shall prepare the OHA biennium budget. You like that, trustee Hoda? Okay. Is that, um, amenable to you, trustee Ahuna, uh, Akina?
Does this, if I may ask, uh, just for one final pass, that, does this, is this consistent with administrations? Understanding?
Chair?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
Um, ye- yes, I, I think how Chair Kahili is, is stating it makes a lot of sense. If, if that appropriate designee refers to administration, then absolutely.
Well, yeah. Then very good.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, I think we can make that amendment and we'll, we'll do that in a second. Um, and so that would read, we're, uh, piping it up to make sure we have it captured correctly. The administration and the Board of Trustees shall prepare the OHA biennium budget for Board of Trustees consideration and approval. Okay. All right, any other amendments or discussion?
Thank you, Chair.
It's good? Okay, all right. Okay. 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 All right, um, okay, so I'll, I'll read the action item. So the motion is to approve on second reading, uh, for final adoption and implementation, action on twenty-five-ten, which is revisions to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees Executive Policy Manual, updated as of May thirty-first, twenty-two-five, relating to trustee duties, responsibilities and conduct, including delegation of authority, signatory, operational and disbursements, and trustee administration interaction policy, administrative processes, including work plans, planning, programming and budgeting system, biennium budget realignments and adjustments, executive session briefings on internal investigations, and other miscellaneous revisions to ensure consistency and clarity. As amended, and the amendment will read Series Three Thousand, page forty-three, subsection three, four, F. It is the policy of OHA to develop a biennium budget in accordance with the OHA Native Hawaiian Trust Fund Spending Policy and State of Hawaii Laws, Rules and Regulations. The budget shall include all sources of funding. God, what happened? Okay. So we're just pass it as this.
Yeah, that's so.
Yeah, sure. Because of the second reading component of it, there's both our general and legal counsel have kind of weighed in, so we do things the right way, so.
So.
If if you're going to amend this on the second reading, that re-triggers it to it being the first reading for this section. So you would have to have another reading for that section. You can still approve everything else that went through the first time. It's just that.
Did I? She was.
Oh, sorry. No, I was just letting them know that section is re-triggered. It would re-trigger. This would be the first reading for that section. And then you would need a second reading just for that section, but you can approve everything else.
Well, I think what the advice is, is we're gonna adopt it on second reading as it's currently been proposed and posted. And the subsequent amendment to that language will need to be, would we vote on that amendment after we've adopted the EPM and then put that on second reading at a future board meeting? Or do we need to vote on that amendment today or not vote on it? I guess if we're gonna post it for public, you know, notice on second reading, then we have to vote for that amendment as a separate vote from this one.
Uh, yes, and maybe you could also, sorry. I might suggest just bifurcating that section from the approval of the executive policy manual on second reading. So you're approving the the second reading of the executive policy manual revisions as provided in the attachment to the action item, with the exception of section three point four point F, which is gonna be bifurcated and taken up for approval as a first reading as amended.
If we, what is our, what is another option if we were not to bifurcate it?
I think then the whole executive policy manual would go back to first reading, and then it would be brought back for second reading at a subsequent meeting.
Or the other option is we just keep it the same, and that when we amend the executive policy manual at a future date, we can include it then in a future.
Yes, that's another option.
Given the fact that we're not doing the budget right now, right? And a matter of fact, I think we're gonna work on creating an SOP for the budget flow chart with the BNF commit chairs' support. That would be the other thing. So we can, we can hold this in our pocket and keep it when the EPM comes back for any other modifications, which it might, because I believe our real estate management plans, investment plans, as it relates to our investment and development lands, are need to go, gonna be included in this as a possible additional appendix once they're completed in a few months or so. I know Lorian Walker and a disaster aid, so how about we do that?
Mr. Chair, thank you. That sounds good to me. I withdraw my proposal.
Okay, okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
But thanks for the clarification, and I think we'll be able to land on something at a future update. Okay, so if there are no further Yep. Everett, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry to extend this discussion further, but administration is seeking clarification on a matter relating to the delegation of authority table. This is appendix two, I believe. Uh, just a moment, sorry. Uh, this is page eighty-six of the Red Line. Actually, specifically to page eighty-seven, the contract executions table. Administration is looking for clarification as to the note provided under the contract executions table. That refers to all contracts and amendments require signatures from the vendor director, corporate counsel, COO, administrator, and BOT chairperson. That language seems to conflict with the table above, suggesting that those number of signatures are required for all contracts and amendments, whereas the execution table above states that, you know, differing levels of signatures are required depending on primarily the amount of the contract involved.
Execution.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you can speak to that.
Sorry, if in response, Mr. Chair, let me, I think in response to what you're bringing up, I, so I see, and I could be wrong, Chair, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I see the the levels up here, the program directors, corporate council, whatever, I see that as being the approval. And then I see the bottom, the note being the execution part, where all signatures are required. Does that make sense?
Is that, is that how it is intended to be, sir?
Yeah. Um. Uh, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Souza. I guess the table refers to contract executions, and really those are the signatures that appear on the signature page of our contracts. And in, again, these cases, those are, those signatures are indications of, you know, the various levels of, basically, they document that certain contract approvals or reviews have been made and, you know, by virtue of the sign-offs. So it's really the ex, the signatures, you know, particularly the number of OHA signers would, in many cases, delay the the execution of our contracts, particularly those of relatively small amounts. I think that differentiation is 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 found in these, you know, the the contract execution levels based on the contract amount.
Is that correct? Is that currently, what was the process now?
Currently, this, our contracts are signed off, for the most part, by our our administrator, our CEO, as the the final signer for OHA that binds OHA to a contract. They will also be signed off as the content by our directors or a senior director, and then by the corporate counsel office, general counsel primarily. That differs for grant contracts, which are signed off by our chief operating officer, and then contracts, I believe, below, sorry, a hundred fifty thousand dollars are signed off by our COO. It can be signed off by our COO as well. So the number of contracts would be significantly increased under this language.
I think the, all the possible signatories for different contracts or agreements, whether they're contracts or grants, are like, these are all the the named entities that could or should sign a contract or an agreement, which is consistent with the table above. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I think we're just looking to confirm that the table is the 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 direction by this board as to who signs off on a on a contract.
Yeah, because the person will sign off, right, on on so many different.
Yeah.
Everyone is the final, final.
And we don't dispute the the nature of who's signing. We just want to be clear that we're not expected to get signatures from every listed.
Sure, sure. Yes, yes.
You know, it's just really what's set forth in the table.
Right, the table is 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 the overarching guidance, for sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
Because you may not have, you may not be a director that signs or.
Yeah, and then I think the, sorry, I think the further clarification is that in some cases it would be, you know, a senior director signing off as the content. I think we have a process to also maybe have them initial just to ensure that, you know, the the proper lines of authority within administration are at least aware of the the contracts being, you know, signed off on, you know, within their respective lines.
Yeah.
So thank you for the clarification.
Okay, yeah, you bet.
Accordingly.
Okay, great. Okay. Trustees, anything else? All right. Hearing no discussion, let's approve this executive policy manual on second reading. Roll cover.
Trustee Ahuna?
Yes.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Yes.
Trustee Galiteria? Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahai?
Yes.
Chair Kahali?
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for all of our hard work on that, and just to put it into the record, our executive policy manual now supersedes what was the two thousand and seven operations policy manual. So this is a really for for all of OHA and the the primary governance documents are our bylaws, our executive policy manual, and our employee handbook. Those are, those are the source documents for all of OHA to use as board of trustee-approved governance documents. Trustee Akina?
Mr. Chair, I do want to say I appreciate the leadership you have shown in leading us to revise our key documents, especially the executive policy manual. You've given particular attention to the input from each of us as trustees.
Alo.
To, in fact, to a very high degree. And I appreciate that greatly. Thank you for the collaboration you've created for this.
Thank you, trustee Akina. Okay, let's go to action item twenty-five-eleven. This is revisions to the Office of Foreign Affairs Board of Trustee bylaws, updated as of March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, to establish an optional board legal counsel position to serve as a full-time in-house legal advisor and resource to the board of trustees exclusively, and other miscellaneous revisions to ensure consistency and clarity. This is second reading and final adoption. To have a motion to adopt action item board of trustee twenty-five-eleven.
Let's go move.
Thanks, trustee Wahai. Trustees, any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll cover.
Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Galiteria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahai?
Yes.
Chair Kahali?
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
All right, thank you so much, trustees, for your vote of confidence in that. We're gonna be going out to market imminently on seeing if there is a board legal counsel to support all of us. Okay, trustees, we have our presenters that have joined us, and we're gonna pause on the agenda where we are right now. Next item would have been a waiver, and then item number E, and with your consent, we're going back to number two on our agenda, which is an informational briefing, which will feature Dr. John Keo Zorio, who is currently the dean of the Hawaii Nuiakea School of Hawaiian Knowledge. Dr. Zoro will present anaina au puni Hawaii and hour-long documentary, which is currently in development, that traces the legacy of theaina through Hawaii's complex, social, and political history, culminating in a proposal to restore these lands as a living trust grounded in Hawaiian values. And we are honored. Dr. Zoro, for you joining us today. Welcome to the Office of Foreign Affairs and the Board of Trustees.
Aloha nui loa kako. It's really good to be here. Thank you for the introduction. I'm here to to talk about a project that we have put together. I brought the production team with me, and I'm gonna just introduce them really quickly. Joy Chang Stannard noted videography for, in Hawaii, has made numerous video documentaries, particularly for the biography Hawaii series back in the early two thousands. Victoria Nalanin Nugel, who is a writer, historian, and also a playwright, who has been the narrator and and has written the narration on many of these video documentaries. Professor Craig Howes, the Center for Biographical Research Director. And also joining us today is Hawaii Nuiakea faculty member, Malia Nobrega Olivera. And she's she's our community outreach person. You probably know her better than you know me, so. And and of course, we are in Hawaii, Hawaiian History Month, and that is actually a, an institution that has recently become institutionalized by the the state legislature after quite a few years of of work and and effort. We're really, really proud of them. Thank you for welcoming us all here today.
And feel free at any time, if you want to welcome anyone to come up, they can join you as well in your presentation.
I I was told it would be about a half an hour, but I don't want to take that nearly that much time, so I'm just gonna very briefly tell you about the project. We propose to to create an hour-long documentary on the history of the Crown and Government Lands of Hawaii. Lands, of course, that you well know are a part of the state-controlled Seated Lands Trust. Part of that trust is is both a public, as defined by the Admissions Act and by further legislation, is defined as both a a public trust for all of the residents of Hawaii and also a native Hawaiian trust. And a portion of that native Hawaiian trust is are really the the revenues, the twenty percent pro-rata share of the revenues that come to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I don't think I need to tell anyone here, because I've I've read what you have 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 written yourselves in your editorials in the OHA newspaper that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is severely underpaid from these. In in part, we believe that one of the reasons for that underpayment is that there is and continues to be a lack of an inventory of those lands, a a true inventory of all of those lands. And let me be really clear. When we say inventory of the Crown and Government Lands, we mean all of the lands that were seized and turned over to the United States in eighteen ninety-eight. And that includes lands that had been set aside for military usage in the early twentieth century. We do not have that inventory, and that therefore limits the ability of this of this agency really to claim those revenues. The second thing that we absolutely believe is that those lands are massively underutilized. The state of Hawaii really protects many of those lands in conservation, leases out other lands, exchanges other lands historically, and 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 generates revenue. But that so many, so much of those revenues really are limited by the imagination of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. And we believe that that many of those lands could be used in community-based management systems that would actually empower and 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 lead to the wealth of of communities, especially Hawaiian communities that are close by or contiguous to those lands. You know, Crown and Government Lands are virtually everywhere in the archipelago. And the third thing that we that that we really strongly believe is that this is the 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 real, the real crux, drux of this documentary is that in making a claim for making a history of these lands and pointing out its historic public as well as native Hawaiian interests, we we actually are embracing this notion that Hawaii as a state needs to be much more conscious of our collective, the public and the native Hawaiian collective interest in these lands. From the beginning of, from the very beginning of our putting this project together, we've been aware of the fraught nature of this argument, particularly for activists like me and others who have have really seen that Hawaiians, our own people, really claim those lands as ours. They they are ours. They belong to no one else. And in order to make the argument that the trust is a shared trust and and needs to be a shared trust because Hawaiians have been and always will be responsible for the people who. and, and needs to be a shared trust because Hawaiians have been and always will be responsible for the people who come here to live. Um, we have to be really conscious of the narrative we create here. Um, I'm gonna ask Victoria Nubel to come up in a minute and explain the process of how these documentaries are normally made. Um, and the way we reach out to principals, kind of spokespeople in, in this area to get the best possible information, even when, even when people don't necessarily agree, right? Um, in order to present, um, a true history of these lands. Because because the political nature of this kind of documentary is so significant. Um, this production team insists on full, um, editorial control over the production and the message. And what we will promise to this board is that it will be historically accurate, that it will, um, that it really comes from, from a place that it comes from, from native Hawaiians who are seriously interested in changing the way these lands are administered and, and utilized. That we are looking to the welfare of our own people, but also the welfare of those lands, of the land itself, of the Aina. So, um, with that, I'm just gonna ask you if you would like to say a few words about the process.
Yeah. Aloha kako. Um, I just wanna add, um, something to what John has been saying is that, you know, I think the public really needs to be informed about, and all of the residents of Hawaii, they need to be informed about, um, these lands and about the public trust that goes along with them because honestly, almost everybody I talk to that's, I mean, those of us in a certain circle, we, we know about them, but I'm telling you, the general public does not know anything about the Seated Lands and anything about them being a public trust. And I think, you know, our documentary is one of the ways to get that information out there so that everyone is more aware of of, of the public trust and the native Hawaiian trust in these lands. So, um, you know, how we, we make these documentaries is, um, usually we start out with, uh, I think we've given you our proposal. We start out with kind of a, a general outline of what we want to do and then John and, um, Craig and I will be the ones that will be doing all of the research and, um, kind of mapping out further what we wanna say. We have some people we've kind of, um, picked out to interview. And really, once we interview those people, we might change what we're saying because of what they've told us. And so, um, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a wonderful process, learning process for everybody, but um, then we, um, once we have a script, we start shooting and, um, then it's up to Joy to edit it and we add, um, music and stuff. We're, we're trying to get, um, her Mahelona, who's a beautiful composer from the island of Hawaii, to help us do that too. But really, um, you know, showing the documentary on television is only one step. We really want to make something that we can take out to the community and that we can, um, have in, uh, community discussions with, um, leaders in the community and just everyone being made aware of, um, of what the content is. And I, um, I spent a lot of years as a museum educator and I feel like I've spent my whole life trying to explain complicated, um, political and social issues and historical issues to a general public. And I really feel like this is really important. And I'm, I'm so happy to be working on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, uh, introduce Joy. Joy, would you like to come up and just say a couple of words?
Thank you so much, uh, Board of Trustees, Mr. Chair. I am basically the ringmaster. I just wanted to introduce myself. I have to keep everybody in line, so we're on, on budget. And basically, I have two hats. I'm also the creative person behind the look of the documentary. So Craig and Vicky and I've known John for many years. We kind of don't need to really communicate anymore because we've done, uh, you know, in, in part and parcel, at least eight to ten documentaries in the past twenty years. And so, um, hopefully you can trust me with the monies that potentially, if you're interested, will be donating to this project. Um, and I will keep everybody in line in terms of that and also the creative part of it. So we are a team, basically. We all have our own expertise and we all rely on that. So I'm very grateful that you, because of your interest in this project, and I think it's very important. Um, I am not native Hawaiian. I'm of Chinese background, but my great grandparents came to Hawaii in the eighteen eighties. And I think we all share in the concern that we have about the future of our community here. I think it has to be sustainable. We have to perpetuate Hawaiian values. And I think it's very important that, as Vicky mentioned, that those in the community, the majority of them have no idea about this particular important topic. And so thank you for your interest and I'm gonna be calling on Craig Howes, my other colleague with this project. Great?
Hello, my kako, hino me aloha. Um, what's my involvement in this? Uh, as you might guess, I am not native Hawaiian and my great grandparents didn't come here either, although I just started my forty-sixth year teaching at the University of Hawaii. Uh, I have been involved with these people in projects for a quarter of a century or more though. Um, what I bring to the project are a couple of things. Most of these previous projects have gone through a nonprofit, the Biographical Research Center Incorporated in the state of Hawaii in nineteen seventy-eight. So one of the things, just in pure, pure financial terms, is that any money that is given to this project goes up on the screen. There is no administrative removal or any kind of infrastructure removal at all. Um, but I think the most important thing, although I am involved in the research, I've spent a lot of time in the Bureau of Conveyances and the State Archives, and I'm finishing an MA in Hawaiian language right now. I decided I needed another degree. Uh, but the other thing I wanted to, uh, mention was that what I've been involved with, and not just with documentaries, but also, you may know, uh, I, uh, had the honor of co-editing the Value of Hawaii, uh, book series with John Osorio over the years. And the books and the documentaries are all being created in order to be able to initiate conversations. In other words, making sure that anything we put together has legs that goes on for years. So for example, the Value of Hawaii books, we did seventy to seventy-five events over the following eighteen months. And each time, we have drawn on partners, whether it's been the Hawaiian Civic Clubs or whether it's been the Hawaii Council for the Humanities or whatever, um, or the library system or whatever. So for me, the major commitment and what I've spent a lot of time doing is trying to make sure that these projects initiate conversations. Uh, so our notion is we would be showing this many, many times on all the islands in all sorts of communities and whatever, and generating commentary and discussion, which then has its capacity to then roll out to other people. So that the idea is to not so much finish something, show it, and then it goes away, but to show something. And because our association would probably be with PBS, our previous documentaries have been shown and reshown regularly over the years. Some of you have may seen the documentary on Kappa uh, that we did, but we also did documentaries on Maiki'a'i Lake, Ruthka'ilikulani, uh, Joseph Kauuluhe, Navahio Kalani Opu. And those were done in English and o'ala Hawaii. So, um, what I bring to the project and in addition to having worked closely with these people on all aspects of it is more than anything else, that impetus to try and make sure that people hear about it, they think about it, they get to discuss it, and that they take that ike themselves and move that out and get other people involved as well. And it seems to me, I can't think of a subject more important to get this kind of conversation going on than the Seated Lands. Hoi vare.
Thank you so much. Um, and, you know, we also a- asked, um, Malia Nobrega, um, Olivera to come by, even though I think this is the, almost the first time she's hearing about this project, because we, because she's really busy and, uh, but it's, it's part and parcel of our desire to make sure that, that we, we engage with a lot of our Kanakamali partners in getting this, uh, this word out. Do you have anything you might wanna say?
Mahalo and aloha. Um, I'm excited. I mean, I get to be with these amazing people doing amazing work. And I get, I get a text that says, "Your task will be to get this into the community." And I think, you know, Hawaii Nuiakea has entrusted me with community engagement and outreach, like for Hawaiian History Month. And I love doing that, whether it's through the relationships, um, through the university or the Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs, or just all of the, um, amazing faculty that we've worked with and all of our partners like Papa'ula Loka'i, I think through our Hawaii Pono'i Coalition, um, and the work with Hawaiian History Month and Mahina'ula Hawaii. Um, we've created so much of these relationships, not just throughout the Pa'ina, 'cause, you know, being on Kauai, like, I'm always about bringing it to the island. And, you know, we always have those conversations. So I, I love being able to do that. And, and then of course, we always try to do things for those that are abroad as well, whether it's partnering with OIB TV to do live streams or, you know, just getting it out. So if you cannot come in person, you can still click on that YouTube link and we're right there. So I'm excited to be a part of the project as well and contribute in that way. Mahalo.
I promised to conclude very quickly. Um, another partner is Kanayo Kana. Uh, and, and they're very interested in, in helping us with the rollout. Um, they're actually also interested in helping to, to, to finance this. And have, um, have volunteered, uh, I think it's just, um, it's, it's an almost, I, I don't know what the figure will be ultimately, but, but Keo Howe was saying, like forty thousand dollars to go into this project. Um, as, as a commitment, uh, from, from Kanayo Kana. We, we really believe that, that knowledge is, of course, uh, the foundation of almost any kind of intelligible and intelligent change. You, you have to know what it is you have. You have to have some sense of the possibilities of the resources we have. And, and that's what we intend to project in this documentary. But the most important thing, I think, is just that community outreach. Going from community to community, um, inviting legislators to come and attend, in, inviting community leaders. Um, having Oha as a presence in those meetings, um, as well as other interested, um, interested Kanakamali institutions like Kanayo Kana, LT, and others. The, the seizure of our lands was never just limited to the Crown and Government Lands, as you know. Uh, Keleipu'ahi lost lands to the US military, so did, um, the Queen Emma's, um, Queen Emma lands. We, we need to really be clear that, um, what we are calling on our people to do is to say, "We can take care of ourselves." And in the, in these next few decades, it may be increasingly important for us to be self-reliant, for us to be able to use our resources wisely and, 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 and in expansive ways. Uh, we really welcome this partnership with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and thank you very much for the time.
Okay, Dean, you mind if we, uh, open it up for questions? I know we have some trustees and recognized vice chair Suzan.
Hello, Mr. Chair. Aloha, Doctor Osorio. Good to see you. Um, well, just right off the bat, from what you guys presented this morning, I definitely support something like this because this is a, a big, big challenge for us at Oha. Partnering up to get the message out, super key. And I don't doubt that, uh, you know, Hawaiians and non-Hawaians alike will be our biggest advocates once they're educated on this issue. Even our friends at the ledge, some of them coming in, they don't know what's going on, you know, what we're asking for, really, just, just to be clear. Um, I, I think, just so this board is under the understanding of how we move forward, how we can support it, uh, really, what is the ask? And I guess maybe that's the business side. What is our financial support we're seeking is out, outreach on our end? What, what would that be? What would that look like?
So, at, at this point, um, the budget for this really is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Total.
Total. And, and it includes the post-production costs as well? You might wanna point out the.
And if you're, yes. And if you're wondering why the budget is so low, um, it's because, um, uh, some of the team is donating their time. Um, and that is why it is quite low. For an hour-long documentary, it's usually, uh, of this scope, at least a quarter of a million dollars. As you can see, I don't know if you have the budget in hand, um, but a lot of it is, um, donated. And, um, since we have so much experience doing this, we pretty much know what to do in terms of our research. A lot of research we've already done from past projects. So it's a really low budget for this kind of documentary.
And, and, sorry, Chair, follow. How long do you anticipate the, the timeline to be, uh, start, finish, and getting it out there?
John, I think you're the best person to answer that.
You know, w- we can't imagine that this is gonna be done in anything under a year. I mean, it's, it's it's time-consuming because we will be, um, scheduling interviews with specific people. And then that will cause us to, you know, reassess, rewrite. Um, I don't know how long the editing pro- process will go, but I think setting this as a, as a year-long project would be, um, appropriate.
Yeah, 'cause we want something that's evergreen, that can air for a very long time. Um, we don't wanna do something that, um, you know, you air it for a couple of months and then it's like obsolete.
One last follow-up. Um, I know you mentioned earlier, Kanayo Kana, our friends from Kanayo Kana may potentially be a fiscal sponsor. Have they committed anything towards the hundred thirty-five thousand currently?
Um, apparently forty thousand dollars, yeah. They're hoping that, um, what they're, what they are getting from this is basically the ability to use some of our research. Um, and, and, and some of our, um, you know, our pictures and, and the kinds of stuff that we will be pulling into the documentary as, as Kanayo Kana really kind of moves in that direction as well. They're really interested in, in the Crown and Government Lands and, and, and also the private lands um, that have been, um, essentially lost.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, Chair.
No, thank you, Chair. Actually, my question has been raised and answered from, it was about the, the ask. But anyway, I just wanted to add, it's great to see Malia. Um, what people don't know is Malia wrote articles in the Kava'ola and won various awards too, so I can tell you guys have a great team. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you for sharing.
Mahalo. Mahalo for being here and sharing with us what you're doing and mahalo anui for putting out this kehe and this message to, for our Kanaka'uivi and our community to hear. As the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and in my capacity serving at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, going into this work and in continuing this work, I have learned that the constant kulianna here is in the advocacy, in sharing with those of all levels of government. Those that are Hawaiian, those that are part of this Hawaii community is to share with them what this kulianna is of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and for our people and the history that this entails. And like it was mentioned, oftentimes, many just don't know what the history is. And for those that are familiar, oftentimes it brings up a kamaha, this multi-generational kamaha that we all um, carry from time to time. And as you know, it is part of our kulianna, our constitution mandated kulianna when it comes to these lands. So, um, as time has gone by in our advocacy and our public policy work, um, part of what I feel is my kulianna is to work with administration and our teams that are working within our community and within the government to always, when it comes to these lands, always preface it by saying, "These are our native Hawaiian Crown and Government Lands of our Hawaiian Kingdom, also known as the Seated Lands of the Public Land Trust." So people know the genesis of these lands and that they know that Hawaiians are never asking for too much. Never. This is part of the kulianna. So. with all that said, also what we have learned is with different levels of government, all parts of government, we're finding that there's not that that ike, the understanding of the history and what their the shared kulianna is with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and having the consultation whenever it comes to our Crown and Government lands of our Hawaiian Kingdom. We are finding that. So that is part of our work, our constant advocacy and education throughout the community and within government, so that they know that when it comes to the Crown and Government lands, please include the Office of Hawaiian Affairs because we are here. Part of our kulianna is to advocate on behalf of our people and also the protection of our our lands, including our submerged lands and our waters as well. And uh, the questions that I had were were addressed, so mahalo Anui in terms of the timeline and what the possible collaboration could look like with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And um, as we go forward, I would I would genuinely be interested in hearing um from from your team as time goes on, the progress of what what you're um working on, so that if there's any way in which that we can um collaborate and participate as you go forward, I'm I'm interested in learning of that.
I would turn to you guys who have more experience in in working with funders in the past. Um, like, did you give periodic reports? Or was this, I mean, part and part of this is, you know, I I don't know if I can stress enough the sense of accountability we have to this message, right? Because because in in bringing people out of ignorance about this topic, it it does open up um a lot of other kinds of a lot, a lot of other kinds of people who see opportunity but don't see the same kind of sense of responsibility. And 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 this is something that we need to be really, really careful about. I I will share with you that originally this um, this project came out of um a Hawaii Executive Collaborative um group of meetings that are called Recovering Hawaii Soul that I and a number of other Kanakamali were you know, very intrinsically involved in it early on. And in fact, the um, this idea was germinated out of a one of the the committees of that group called originally called the Seated Lands Committee. I made them eventually change it to the Kingdom Lands Committee. Uh, as as a way of making sure that everybody was educated about what these lands were, where they came from, and really what our um responsibility should be. They wanted to see a documentary. We put this project team together and then we told them we will expect you to fund this, but we will be the ones who will decide what the content is. And that's when we had to part ways because they could not accept those conditions. The we feel it's really important to let you know that we are making progress. And and you should know that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs uh, as as an institution is a part of this history and we will talk about that history as as we conclude this. But so much of the early part is going to be where they came from. And the fact that the lands, this is the most amazing thing. Uh, Victoria Nubel pointed this out to us early in the project. She said, you know, what's really amazing is that Koikialuli set aside these lands, right? Created basically the possibility for private property, but also created property under the government, property for the Crown. And to a large extent, those lands are still here and they're still available for us. That's a miracle. That's a miracle that they're not all gone. And so we have an obligation to those, to that Ina, to recognize and 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 to and to the Kingdom and to Koikialuli, to recognize their foresight in creating this this for us. And that's the story we intend to tell. The continued existence of these lands for our people and for the public. And and how important it is for us today.
Trustee Galatera.
Yes.
Quick follow-up. So trustee Galatera, if you may.
Um, mahalo for sharing all this. Part of my constant thinking when it comes to our Crown and Government lands is wondering, okay, what's next? Beyond our parata share and what is the education, the continued education? So I'm hoping with this messaging that there is the possibility going forward. And as we know of all the lands throughout, that there might be some type of geomapping for them for those that live here are Kanaka Oiwi, those that come to visit the Malihini. And so that whether it's a geomapping, geotagging, um QR codes, or even proper signage when it comes to our Crown and Government lands, so people know that these are our Crown and Government lands. And this is something that I thought of when we went to tour to Lahaina and I saw flags all around and I thought, are these Crown and Government lands? There should be signage so that we know that there is, that they know this history, so that we can appreciate what these lands are.
Craig had a wonderful idea about about these community outreach that if you if you went into a community, um, and you know, Makakilo or Waianae or Waihewa, you could you could take maps of the of the Crown and Government uh lands that are close to those communities and point them out to the community and say, these lands here that are close to Lehu'e, that are close to Waihewa, tho- those are the lands that we're talking about. And have, did you know that it has a different ownership, that 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 there's a different kind of kulianna for those lands? Do you know that um how they've been used in the past? We we actually see this as just the start of a a general kind of community interest in this. And you know how those things go, right? When Hawaiians start really looking into into the record and and realizing um, what is actually available, what has been hidden. It creates all kinds of possibilities.
Trustee Galatera.
Yeah, I'll be brief, but I'm so pleased that you folks are here. I I see the level of excellence because I've worked with many of you before. Aloha Joy, aloha Viki, and of course, Professor, Professor. I I wanted to just share with you that the OHA is currently engaged in dialogue, which what we call the Public Land Trust Working Group. And we want and we're encouraging a full and concise inventory of the of the trust lands. And in that, uh, we we've learned a lot of things. And certainly, in when I was in the Senate, I learned a lot of things. And one was the inconsistency of the inventory. And the inconsistency of a formula for revenues from Seated Lands. Not only because the inventory is not complete, but it's because right across the entire bureaucracy, everybody handles revenue generation differently. Where we should be getting twenty percent is, you know, we're not too pleased about that, but we should be getting twenty percent of every candy bar on the UH campus. But there is no adequate uh line of or formula for revenue generation. So as you walk around, what I'm getting to is, as you walk around the Capitol, because you're going to be asking questions. One of the questions is, what do you know about Seated Lands? And I guarantee you, the general consensus will be, if they're truthful, I don't know. Then you're gonna, the next step is you're gonna teach them. And within that conversation, you might want to ask them the sidebar conversation of, what's that formula that we use for revenue generation off of Seated Lands? And I'll guarantee you, nobody has a consistent formula. I'm just sharing that with you as you, you know, you do your due diligence. Yeah. But thank you for for coming today. Mahalo plenty.
I have a I have a question. When when you envision this documentary and the the scope and depth and breadth of it, ultimately to inform and educate not just Kanaka, but the broader Hawaiian and non-Hawaiian population, how far back in that history do you think you're going to go? When will you begin?
So I created a timeline for this Seated Lands Committee back about a year and a half ago, two years ago. Um, that's like eight pages long and it goes back to Mailikukahi, goes back to the, you know, fifteenth century to to really look at the 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 ways in which authority, chiefly authority, began to see their responsibilities for the land, how they organized them into Ahupua and Moku and um, and how they administered those things. And then we just trace, that can be traced all the way through um the Kingdom and the Kingdom's efforts really to deal with the fact that this massive depopulation, right, was reducing the physical imprint of Kanaka on the land. So lands that had been productive before were wastelands. The when when you think about things like that, you realize that the that that the Mahale was actually the most rational kind of way to figure out how to make lands productive again. And that it involved basically sharing uh with these newcomers who had different ideas about how land could be utilized. We can, we can basically criticize, you know, what what transpires from that. But the intent, right, the intent was to make the lands live. So when you ask that question, we will spend a portion of the time of this of this documentary talking about the historic spiritual foundation of those lands, how our people really saw ourselves as as coming out, being born out of those lands, right? Being nested in them. And then walk our way through this cataclysmic period that produced the Kingdom. Walk our way through the um the the further cataclysm of of the takeover of our government and the removal of those lands from our control, right? And then walk our way through the territory and and look at one taking after another by the federal government, by military bases. Until eventually, you know, the the state of Hawaii, you know, even the the Hawaiian Homes Trust, right? We will spend some time looking at at the limitations of that, the setting aside of the very specific lands that were not really of any use um to sugar companies and 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 entrenched interests here. And and the limitations that were placed on that in terms of blood quantum. None of these things are going to be ignored. There's some question about how much we can actually crowd into an hour-long documentary. And we actually thought about doing two hours. The problem is, and the problem is, you you can't do a two-hour documentary and take this out to the communities. Have them watch that and then have a conversation afterwards. But there are so many different ways that you can collect data, you can collect testimonies, you can, you can do things online that that support this. So that this is not just an hour documentary, it's something that links up uh on on websites and YouTube into a whole bunch of other really important um um in information. So yes, we walk our way through all of that and we come to the present. We we look at what at the creation of of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and we acknowledge the very limited kinds of resources that come to it, the decisions that have been made that limited where you could draw those resources, no longer from the airports, right? Airport revenues tonight, those kinds of things. They they are important to an extent to demonstrate the ongoing kinds of injustices that were done. But but also to open people up in in the end to a vision of how these lands can make us live again. There is no reason for the level of impoverishment in our communities. There is no reason for this. And 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 actually, this is about, you know, the creating of that vay vay, that wealth, uh, that that land has always been there for us.
The rea- the the reason why I asked the question is, um, and that's great to hear. I don't know how you're gonna capture that in one hour.
It's gonna be amazing.
But uh, you know, most, at least those in the know um focus on the overthrow and the illegal confiscation of those Crown lands, Lilu'u's lands, as well as the government lands of the Kingdom at the time, then the eventual seeding of those lands to the United States. But I don't think there's um a broad sense of the eighteen forty-eight Mahale. Whether however you think uh whether that should have happened or not, that was a watershed event that changed land tenure in Hawaii from this feudal system to an alorio private land system. It was two months in eighteen forty-eight, followed by the Kulianna Act. Where we had the Konohiki and the Makainana and the Crown and the Government lands. And then even that period after the Kulianna Act until the overthrow, when uh Makainana, Hawaiian or non-Hawaiian, could purchase
Right.
Government lands.
Absolutely.
Uh, I don't think people really understand that um that event in Hawaii's history as it relates to land tenure. And I I, it's great to know that you're gonna cover at least that.
We are going to cover all of that. Yes.
John, could I add something?
Yes. Yeah.
Can I come up? You should come up since Vicky.
This has to do with the nuts and bolts and production end. And one of the things that especially Vicky and John and I are associated with is the creation of the Moolelo. And the Moolelo isn't just beginning, middle, and end, it's also proportions. So if you look at the material we provided you as the sort of precis, you'll see uh to follow what the Chair was saying, that the whole documentary is grounded in an early awareness of traditional understanding of what land was in relation to people. That that's there from the very beginning and that it's informing what's going to happen with the Mahale and everything onward. The other thing you will see is that we very consciously made sure that at the end of it, and it wouldn't just be two minutes at the end, but the end of it is moving forward to the future. The notion of what's the continuity of this and our understanding of this is also that what we're telling people at the beginning is as compelling as to what's going to happen tomorrow in the future as it was in shaping everything that's come. So from the nuts and bolts and um to follow up on something John said, uh, making an hour documentary is like taking a large wet sponge and trying to get it into a matchbox. But you do that in part by thinking of proportions and thinking about what has to be there and how much time it has to be invested. So in following up on your question, there is invested time at the beginning, there's invested time at the end, and we basically think
And and I think what we'll find, and it's obvious that when you look at not just native Hawaiians, but indigenous peoples worldwide, this settler colonial mindset is dispossession of native peoples from their lands. And that event was contributed to a cascading series of events that continued to erode native Hawaiian people from their lands and contributed to all the things you talked about today that our native Hawaiian people continue to um to face, the dispossession of their lands.
It's true. And this documentary would be false if it didn't point out and 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 over and over again uh the ways in which native people have been dispossessed. But it would also not be true, a true documentary, if it didn't point out that there has been a collective community that's been created here
Susan.
um, by Kanaka and non-Kanaka alike. That and that is actually one of the principal reasons for making certain that people understand that it is a blessing that this is both a native Hawaiian trust and a public trust. Because we would never, we would never dispossess the people around us. We would never send people home um to whatever, you know, wherever their families came from generations ago. We would never do that. And so we we are we have always known that we have to live together. And the only way I I think that we can do that in the fraught times in which we live in a situation where we're not certain what will happen with the United States of America. We we really aren't. We need to be sure that the community here is at peace and has a vision for the future that is inclusive.
Trustees, any else?
They were not at all.
And Dean, I, Dean Ozorio. Dean, I, Dean Ozorio, I have a quick question for you separate from this. I've been on the receiving end of some emails that have unfortunately, I guess, informed that you will be, you will be leaving your position come the spring of twenty twenty-six.
This is voluntary.
Voluntary.
Yeah, I, I made this announcement. We have, we have people with big feet. We do. That's, that's the lovely thing. I wanted to show you about the University of Hawaii is we've been producing amazing leaders and younger leaders. It's time for me to go back to the classroom and and to work on this documentary and
Maybe Oha.
and be ready for the rollout. Yeah? Yeah.
Well, you know, mahalo for your service and we enjoy the next, you know, seven or eight months of your time there at the college.
I will.
I'm gonna miss you.
I'm enjoying it now. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, mahalo trustees and mahalo to our presenters. We're gonna jump right back into the last item on our agenda, which is gonna be going back to the Budget and Finance Committee. This is gonna be action item twenty-five seventy-two, which in the interest of the request from the administration is to bring it direct to the Board of Trustees. And this is gonna be an approval of revisions to designated staff salaries. And so we're gonna need a waiver to waive the purview of the Committee on Budget and Finance for this. Waiver will require six votes. Of course, we have the Budget Finance Chair here, so we'll recognize her so she can speak on that. And then if the waiver passes, then we'll bring up the the action item and we'll recognize the administration to explain why this has been brought before the board. So Chair recognizes the Budget and Finance Committee Chair for the action item number twenty-five seventy-two.
All right, mahalo. So for, this is a request for approval to waive action item BF twenty-five dash seventy-two, which is the approval of revisions to designated staff salaries in the FY twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven by NMM Budget, including temporary assignment, adjustments and clarifications, implementation of ad hoc recommendations and corrections to misprinted salary ranges from the Committee on the Budget and Finance to the Board of Trustees pursuant to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Board of Trustees bylaws, March twenty, twenty twenty-five, Article eight, Section M.
Okay, so trustees, why don't we do this? So we have a motion on the table. Let's discuss the motion. I think we proceed to the vote on the waiver. And then we can put it on the table in a subsequent motion and then have discussion on that. And there are actually three motions as part of that action item as relates to specific positions. So any discussion just on the general waiver, not necessarily to the content, but the waiver? No? We have six votes? Three, four, five, six, we do. Okay, no discussion? Roll call vote on the waiver.
Justi Ahuna.
Aye.
Justi Akaka stepped out. Justi Akina.
Aye.
Justi Alapa.
Aye.
Justi Galuteria.
Aye.
Justi Lindsay is excused. Justi Suzha.
Aye.
Justi Waheee.
Yes.
Chirka Hale.
Aye.
And Justi, Justi Akaka.
Aye.
Mahalo. You have eight yes votes.
Okay, so the waiver is adopted and we now recognize Chair Alapa for, to read action item twenty-five seventy-two before we go to the motions.
Motion one, yeah?
Oh, no, just the read action item twenty-five seventy-two.
Oh, okay.
Again.
Mahalo. Action item BF twenty-five dash seventy-two, approval of revisions to designated. Did I write it right?
Yep.
Yeah, designated staff salaries in the FY twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven by NMM Budget, including temporary assignment, TA adjustments and clarifications, implementation of ad hoc recommendations and corrections to misprinted salary ranges from the committee.
Okay, so we have a motion. Let's bring up the administration, Corey's here and Kapo Hana. And we'll just discuss all three of the proposed parts of this action item. And then once we feel comfortable and the questions are asked, we can then proceed with the motion. So Chair recognizes administration, Kapo Hana and Corey, and any, for, I guess, further detail on this action.
Okay. I guess it's good afternoon trustees, mahalo Chair, Vice Chair. Yes, I guess the proposed action here would be to approve those revisions. First motion would be for the removal of the TA salary differentials. Approve removal of TA assignment, temporary assignment salary differentials from identified positions consistent with the board's August seventh, twenty twenty-five action terminating the previously applied ten percent TA adjustment. Did you want me to read all of the motions first or did you wanna talk about each motion one at a time?
You don't need to read them, but you can, you can just speak to the the three things in here. Obviously, one is the TA, the other one is an SR classification, and then the third one is to reaffirm certain positions, right? So what did you speak to that?
Right. Okay, so in regards to the misprinted salary range, one of the things that was noticed when we're working on implementing some of the changes is that there was a what looked to be a misprint in the SR range for the strategy consultant position. Based on what was there, it looked like it should have actually been an SR twenty-four to be consistent with the other salary consultant positions. And so we are requesting that, that be corrected or classified accordingly from SR twenty-five to an SR twenty-four. Because that is a position that we're currently recruiting for so that we can ensure that the salary range that is being advertised is reflective of the correct salary range. And then the other we, item we had noticed is that some of the salary amounts for the land legacy manager position as well as, oh, sorry, so this to just get approval to leave the land, legacy land manager position salary at the one oh two eight four three, which was the amount that included the previous ten percent adjustment.
Yeah, let me, I guess, let me, I think, add some clarity to this. So trustees, as you're aware, February timeframe, we created the ad hoc committee, right, on staff salaries. That was led by the Vice Chair. And the basis for their work was based on salary, sensitive salary documentation that at that moment in time, March or so of this past year, included staff salaries that unbeknownst to the committee had included the TA adjustment. So these were specific positions that because of the vacancy were determined to be filling in interim role and were applied a TA differential of ten percent at the time. And so in the, for however long that had been going on for. So when the commission committee did its work, they were going off of a HR product that only identified their salary in that point in time that included the TA and did not differentiate between what was their base salary and then the TA increase. And then at that point in time, what was their actual salary, which included the TA. So when they included those salaries and they're dealing with a hundred thirty-plus positions, the assumption was made that that was the position salary. And in reality, in those three positions, it, it had included the TA. So one of the things that I've asked for is in this internal document that HR has, because people come and people go and and we now have new salary rates based on our budget, is that we include, we always should have the base salary for every position. And then another column should be the TA differential, which now will be for a period of only ninety days, right? And then the font, the next column would have what their current salary is at that time. So there is no, there's no question on what the base salary is, what the TA additional, whether it's ten percent or five percent. And then for those ninety days where they land, we didn't realize that until after the budget was adopted. And so for these three positions, the Director of OIVB Wellbeing, the Public Policy Advocate, number one, as well as the legacy, the legacy land manager. Those needed to be fixed. And that's what this, this fix is. And I think what's also important for our Oha staff is it was not the, the, the charge of the Salary Commission Committee to level salaries based on qualifications or time, years in service or levels of academics, you know, degrees and certification. That was not their job. Their job was to look at the salaries as it, you know, was compared to other peers at the civil service level, recommend percentage-based increases and apply those based on categories, starting with the lowest level paid here at Oha and moving their way up with their threshold being a hundred thousand dollars. Because that has come up recently and decisions that were made prior to Corey and even prior to Stacy, under previous administrations to set salary rates where they were at that time, it was not part of that committee's work to do that. And so the action item in front of you is to just level set what it should have been. And, and that's, does that make sense, trustees? So the recommendation is to set the Director of OIVB Wellbeing in Ina Momoona, where it, original base salary was, which is one oh five four three thirty-two. The Public Policy Advocate, one for Oahu, to seventy-two nine forty-eight. And then the legacy land manager position, the recommendation was to keep that salary that was adopted in the board's budget on June thirtieth because of the level of responsibility, the legacy land assets that that position has to oversee and take care of on multiple different islands. And that's a heavy Kuliana that that, that position has to, has to take care of. So if you don't have any questions, that, that, that makes sense? Yeah. Justi, I'll share.
So this recalibration pretty much does it for us, Will, right?
It does.
Okay, because this is a huge seismic shift in what, what this, how this place ran before.
Yeah.
So this brings us up to market, essentially.
Better than we were.
Better than we were.
That's for sure.
Okay. I just wanted clarity.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and, and we do acknowledge, and I think, you know, the board acknowledges that there are maybe not necessarily isolated cases, but there are instances throughout our administrative staff where salary levels and rates were set under previous administrations that you know, made through human resources need to be considered at some point. But that is not this and that is not, not today. And there are some that have some valid arguments and I can't fault anyone for fighting for their position and their salary. Every penny counts, especially in today's economy. And so, you know, we recognize that, but, but that is not this. And I would only encourage Corey and HR, if you do deal with situations like that, that whereas, you know, responsive, and I know you are, to, to those staff members and trying to treat everyone fairly and justify why salary rates are the way they are. Okay, so that's the first one. Anything on, doesn't sound like we have anything on, questions on that? The next one, Corey, is, I think, simpler, which is just an SR twenty-four and SR twenty-five classification. It's a misprint, yeah? And that was for a vacant position. It was for one of our strategy consultants. And that's basically it. That's it. Okay, so if we have no further questions of that, you know, I didn't ask for any public testimony on this. Anybody signed up, testify?
We don't have anyone signed up.
Okay. Then Chair recognizes the Budget and Finance Chair to read motion number one.
Mahalo. Approval of removal of temporary assignment TA salary differentials from identified positions consistent with the board's August seventh, twenty twenty-five action terminating the previously applied ten percent TA adjustment.
Okay, we have a motion, trustees, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Justi Ahuna.
Aye.
Justi Akaka.
Aye.
Justi Akina.
Aye.
Justi Alapa.
Yes.
Justi Galuteria.
Aye.
Justi Lindsay is excused. Justi Suzha.
Aye.
Justi Waheee stepped out. Chirka Hale.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, motion number two. And you know, before we vote on this, also want to let trustees know that prior to this action item, the administration was proactive and it reached out to every single one of those employees, versus only three of them, to notify them ahead of time about this and, and explain the justification behind it. So appreciate you, you, you doing that. And then going back to about a month ago, early August, when, when letters had gone out to a number of staff here, we end up taking care of all that and, you know, without a shadow of a doubt, everyone here at Oha knows what their annual salary is, some of which are already incorporated, others are gonna take effect in October, November pay periods.
Yeah, so we're, we're still working on those, but yeah, we will be sending out communications to let everybody know what the corrected amounts are gonna be.
Okay, great.
Good.
Okay. All right, motion number two.
Approve implementation of ad hoc committee recommendations, setting the salary for the legacy land manager position at one hundred two thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars effective July first, twenty twenty-five, as previously adopted by the board on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, BOT twenty-five dash oh seven, and reaffirmed on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, BF twenty-five dash fifty-one.
Trustees discussion. Okay, if not, roll call vote.
Justi Ahuna. Justi Akaka. Justi Akina.
Aye.
Justi Alapa.
Aye.
Justi Galuteria.
Aye.
Justi Lindsay is excused. Justi Suzha.
Aye.
Justi Waheee.
Yes.
Chirka Hale.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, motion number three. Justi Alapa.
Approve the correction of misprinted salary range data for vacant strategy consultant positions to reflect the appropriate SR twenty-four, not SR twenty-five classification and posting range.
Trustees discussion. Roll call vote.
Justi Ahuna.
Aye.
Justi Akaka.
Aye.
Justi Akina. Justi Alapa.
Aye.
Justi Galuteria.
Aye.
Justi Lindsay is excused. Justi Suzha.
Aye.
Justi Waheee.
Yes.
Chirka Hale.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Okay, great. That is now adopted and excellent. Okay, I think we are up to our executive session. And before we do that, let's take a, let's break, let's reconvene at twelve thirty? Let's come back at twelve thirty-five, twenty minutes, twelve thirty-five recess. Let's come back at uh twelve thirty-five, twenty minutes, twelve thirty-five recess.
On any of the executive session items.
There is no one signed up to speak on the executive session item.
Okay, well once we conclude our executive session, we'll return to open session to provide a report on the discussion and to complete the remaining items on our agenda. Um, we are going into executive session to discuss several items. One of them will be to discuss and take action on our Kapuhana's request to serve in volunteer roles. Um, two of those roles uh that have uh been offered to Kapuhana is to serve as a board of regent for Sharmanad University as well as an honorary commander for the Hickam honorary commanders program. The second item is to discuss and get a status update on personnel related investigation of former OHA staff. And then finally legal matters is to convene an executive meeting to consult with our legal counsel regarding the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities with respect to matters relating to its prior legal counsel. And then we will come back into um open session. So can I get a motion to go into executive session pursuant to ASAR?
Still moved.
Oh, so one more. Oh, okay. Yeah, got it. My bad. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, got it. Okay, and we'll also be um Yeah, that's what I read. Oh, just read that again. Oh, okay. Okay, and then also to discuss to consult with its legal counsel regarding the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities with respect to the executive summary of findings regarding an internal investigation. And Oh, did I say that? Or I don't I don't see it on here. Okay, and just for clarity sake, we'll also be discussing in exec session um uh at the request of our partners at Kamamea Schools on a recent um development uh that has occurred as early as this morning regarding Kamamea Schools admissions policy. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. We discussion trustees and we have motion for that motion. Okay. Discussion if not roll call vote.
Justia Hunna will be returning. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Valutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahehe?
Yes.
And Cher Kaheli?
Aye.
We have seven yes votes. We are moving into executive session.
Okay, let's set the room for executive session and we will go right into it. Sorry for the short lunch. So trustees, if you have uh food, please feel free.